Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting to order. I would like to first ask everyone to stay in and join their side in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kevin, if you please do your roll call. Jay Vowes.
Here.
Brad Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Phonecam.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Abby Wilder.
Okay, has everyone given a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting held on January 23rd? Any additions, deletions, corrections?
Make a motion, accept them as email.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay. Okay, we have a fire prevention ordinance, right?
We do.
Uh... Do you two people come up? Okay, would you guys both please come up?
So what we've found out over the past year, talking with the fire marshal that represents our district, that we've had some gaps in our fire prevention ordinance, was done about a year and a half ago. And what we've got, after talking with Ann, she made the recommendation that we go ahead and repeal the current one and then bring this one into effect. And she just finished it today, so I know I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. So, I'll give it up to you then.
Right. So, Chapter 91 covers our fire prevention and fireworks ordinances. And even though Chapter 91 was just repealed and replaced in February of 22, the amendments that were presented by Chief Cheats and Fire Marshal Lothrige span the entire chapter and include either revisions or additions totaling 13 different sections of the chapter. So, if council would like to... And some of the changes relate to procedures and inclusion of an appeals process in the event that somebody wants to challenge the issuance of a violation of the order. And that would now come before Board of Works, similar to how code enforcement is handled. There are permitting issues and things, different inspection processes and procedures that are involved with this, the assessment of fees related to inspections or violations. So regardless of whether the ordinance is introduced and passed on its first reading tonight, it is going to require a public hearing and an opportunity for council to kind of delve into this and talk with Chief Cheats and Tony and myself over the next couple of weeks if there are any additional corrections, revisions, changes. So, my recommendation would be to introduce it, pass it on its first reading, hold the public hearing, and then move forward with final passage after the public hearing. And if it needs to be passed, it can be done in that respect. But the changes that are made are all ones that have been recommended and are in the form that was presented to me through the fire department and fire marshal. So, does council have any questions?
Introducing it and having a first reading just gets the process started.
Correct.
There's that many changes within a year, or what's the big...
A lot of it is where, like with the Knox box, we did have the gate key, wherever, like at Rev, the one gate, if you open it, it shuts every so many minutes. So we can't begin if they don't call in. So we have to get here now, it stays with the gate when it closes. You have to put a Knox switch in, once it's opened, you carry the cube and it will open the boxes like here at City Hall. And it's a lock that we unlock up the front and put the lock back on. So when the gate opens, it stays open, so everybody can come through. It also talks about it with Knox, again, like out front here. If we have your sprinkler system in the basement, if there's a lot of damage done to it, vandalism, we can have you or whoever put a Knox brand or our keys we use to win, unlock it, and we can use it then. So with that, there's the issue with, I want to say, big business thinking it's kind of not that much. So we say they have an exit line out, or an emergency lighting where if the power goes off, you can see. They don't want to fix those onesies twosies type things. And this gives us a little bit more tea if you could get those fixed.
The people that don't have the Knox box, when this goes, are they going to have to put it in? Is this all for new construction?
This is new construction, or if they do so much renovation, then they will be asked to put the Knox.
Do you have a lot of factories now that have Knox boxes, or...
I want to say about 100% of the factories have them, especially if they have sprinklers. For anyone that's ever we need to get in or try and wait for someone to get there. If they have a birthday sprinkler bike, we can get in and shut things down and create less damage. City, like, we're...
I will go ahead and make a motion to introduce Ordinance 2024-1 by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Aye.
Ordinance 2024-1, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which repeals and replaces Chapter 91 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented regarding fire prevention and fireworks.
I will make a motion to pass Ordinance 2024-1 on its first reading.
Second. Motion is second. Rule call votes.
Jay Vowes.
Yes.
Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Phonecam.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
At this point, it would be wise to table it until our next meeting so that we can get a public hearing set and held related to the fees and penalties provisions that have been revised in our part of this ordinance, so...
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, we'll table it till the next meeting, which we're going to talk about here in a second.
The public hearing will be at the next meeting?
Yes. And it just needs, it would need to be advertised 10 days, like 10 days in advance, so...
Okay, I actually forgot to recognize that we have a special guest in here. So if she would like to stand up and introduce herself and tell us what grade she's in.
Hi, I'm Olivia Betherson, and I'm in ninth grade.
And she's a part of our mayor's youth council, so thanks for coming tonight.
Welcome.
And thanks for the guy you brought with you. Okay. Next we're going to talk about the meeting. AIM is holding their legislative dinner on February 20th in Indianapolis. And I'm actually on the AIM legislative team this year, so I really need to go. And that opportunity is also there for council, so I think we have a couple council members that are going to join me down there on the 20th. So, I need a motion to move the next meeting. I think the consensus is to go a day later, if that's what works for everyone. Day of 21st, if that works.
I'll make a motion to move the council meeting to Wednesday, the 21st.
Second.
And that would be, so that public hearing would be that day then, too. So we'll motion second to move the next meeting to Wednesday, February 21st. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have some discussion over the arts commission ordinance. I think Jamie's here and Kim Brant's here. I think, I'm not sure how many years, many years ago, but I think the city council started setting money aside for the arts. And I think at that time, there were many different groups coming and asking for money each year to do different events and different things. So I think council made a decision that let's put some money into an arts commission, and those groups could ask the arts commission for money. And now we have the Hive who's running itself, although I'm not running itself, sorry, Kim's running it. But it's up and going all the time, it's not just the one event here and there. So there's events all the time, rentals, art gallery, all kinds of stuff. So I think they wanted to talk about that a little bit.
So, the way that the ordinance is written currently, basically, if a piece of artwork sells at the Hive, let's face it, $100 piece of artwork, $80 of that goes to the artist. And then that's 80%, so then the other 20% goes to just the general fund. And right now, it is set up as a non-reverting fund, but what the arts commission is asking is, can that money go to that non-reverting fund instead? And it's basically just part of a growing pain. The ordinance just needs to be, I think, edited, or something in the ordinance needs to be changed to allow that process to happen.
So the originating ordinance is Ordinance 2019-7, and that's the ordinance that established the Public Arts Commission. And within that, it identifies specific programs, it identifies the purpose for the arts commission. One of the purposes is for... To solicit and distribute funds through donations, grants, and other support to further expand the arts, culture, and historical services and programs available to citizens of Decatur and members of the community. It is also established to... Develop, adopt, and administer policies and procedures pertaining to planning, selection, placement, maintenance, relocation, the access... That's the name of public art, oh my gosh. Develop, adopt, and administer policies and procedures regarding the use of funds, collection of artists, review of design, installation of work, and adoption of protocols and other policies necessary. So, it is, the goals are to promote and support programs for tourism, cultural exchange, and goodwill, promote and support economic development and vitality of the community, celebrate and advocate for artists and the important role that they play in the community, enhance visual environment and public spaces, strengthen the positive reputation, brand, and stature of the city of Decatur and its neighborhoods, promote distinctive and diverse artwork, and improve access to the arts for all citizens, and create opportunities for engagement and civic dialogue. The fund, the non-reverting fund, identifies the primary source of funds to be deposited into. The non-reverting fund are private grants and donations, programs or admission fees from hosted educational courses or art exhibitions, other municipal contributions or funds. And the city of Decatur may choose to dedicate other sources of funds for projects and administration. And those contributions are subject to standard processes and policies that govern the city's budgeting and expenditures. Permitted uses of funds, as this ordinance already states, would be the primary, in general, 40% of each annual budget shall be designated for public arts programs. 40% designated for public arts projects. And in general, no greater than 20% shall be designated for administrative and operating expenses. Section D of the ordinance related to the use of funds says that consideration would be given to ensuring the annual distributions are equitable amongst recognized art groups or initiatives that are actively contributing to and supporting the goals of the public art program. So, it would... In relying upon the existing ordinance, you then look at the budget for the Public Arts Commission. 2024 has $20,000 allocated to the Public Arts Commission Fund, and $5,000 of that is to be paid towards artist commissions. I think the request from the Arts Commission, I don't, you're not asking for anything additional to be budgeted. You're essentially asking for the money that is already being generated to simply be redirected from the city's general fund into this non-reverting fund to be able to keep from dipping into the budget.
Yep.
Okay.
So basically, keeping the money that you're making.
Yeah.
So where does the rental money go now? Does it go back to the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
So the non-rever, the non-reverting fund is not actually Arts Commission, is that the Hive fund itself?
It's Public Art Fund.
It's the Public Art.
Yeah, so there's donations come into it. The programs that are at the Hive, those feed into that. So I think, well, we're just trying to get everybody on the same page, so we're all, so we write one ordinance. So we're wanting, is it just commissions? Is that the main?
Well, when classes are held, it's that money could go into that fund to be used as well.
And...
And if we could separate the sculpture tour money from the Hive money, I think some of what you're talking about, like there was 250 dollar dimension, I think kind of got moved into that, that's a sculpture tour.
Yeah, the Public Art Fund is, I can sculpt any of those, any of the art programs we have going on, all goes into that fund.
Can you guys just separate it a little more?
I think Jamie said it while, when she said it's growing pains. So we opened the Hive, then COVID hit. Then rethinking how this works, I want to credit both of these ladies for working hard to get the Hive to where it is. I never would have imagined it's going to be rented out as much as it is, or as many art classes as there is. There's a lot of activity in that building, and that's great, and it's what we wanted, so... I think we're here to support the growth of what's happening now.
Right. You know, this is, it's kind of the same thing that happened with the Rev complex the first year. We budgeted so much, and I think a lot of them thought that when you sell a bunch of concession stands, it goes back in that fund, well, it doesn't. You sell concessions, it goes back to the general fund. So I think, towards the end of the year, they started running out of their budget money because there was nothing feeding back into it. So I think there is a non-reverting fund now there. So, you know, the city's, I mean, the city general fund still does pay for the utilities and internet and things. There's still things down there that the city pays for.
Insurance.
Insurance, I mean, there's still...
I think the rental money could stay where it is. I don't think we're not asking for the rental money.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if council wants it to be the commissions? Because right now, what happens is, yeah, it goes, they have $5,000 budgeted, so if they sell a piece of art, they're going to have to come and ask for more money if they go over that $5,000.
Well, see, I thought that commissions at one point was set up to pay for art, not to pay commissions. I don't think anything was ever set up, like, I think we're talking two different commissions, like...
That's what this is used for now. I don't know what originally it was set up to...
So they have this budget, that I think, like, she would like to use for supplies, for classes and different things. But if, you know, say, like she said, say you have a $100 piece of art, somebody pays $100 for it, that all goes to general fund, and then they pay out, they pay the 20, $20 the city needed, the person who's funded is just, it's depleting for no reason.
Yeah, I don't think that's how, I thought the commission's budget was like to pay for art, like, if we wanted to buy a sculpture somewhere, that's what that was set up for.
Commission somebody to do a sculpture.
Commission someone to do art when it was originally set up. I don't think it was actually ever talked about, like, commissions. It's making money now, that was the goal.
Right.
I think it just needs to stay there, though. Like, commissions need to stay there, maybe the city takes the rent to help pay the utilities, but the whole goal is to have a Hive run itself, or fund itself.
So, okay, so let's say $100 is brought in, are you saying, just bringing it into the general fund, the city pays $80 to the artist and then 20 to the Hive?
No, I'd rather the Hive do it all. Like, can it not come to the Hive and they pay out the 80 and keep the 20 in the non-reverting fund? Or maybe it's got to go to...
As far as like the transaction there, or as far as...
Yeah.
I don't know with internal control stuff, if...
I think there was a reason to fill up the supply, we couldn't do it the last time this was brought up. I don't remember it, though.
In that, in that context, it was more about internal controls, because, I mean, it's fantastic as a job that you do. You're not there all the time, and there are other people and volunteers that are handling money. And so, it needs to be, we need to know who's handling that, those transactions. So that's why everything kind of came through the city, and the fund is there. But still within the city, there could potentially be a separate line item or a non-reverting fund that's specific to the Hive, that that's the...
No, my fault was the, whenever somebody buys a piece of art, that money goes in to the public art fund, and then the commission comes out of that fund.
So they would still make their 20%?
Yeah. Or, yeah, depending on how council wants to set it up, or that 20 could go back to the city.
But the public art, by including the sculpture tour and the play that's there...
Yeah, but it wouldn't, it'd just be a wash then, though, is what I'm saying is, if you paid out the $80 to the artist and the 20 back to the city, you wouldn't affect, you wouldn't affect that fund at all. $100 go in, $100 go out, but it wouldn't affect your budget at all. You wouldn't run your budget down paying off. Because that, that's, my thought is if they sold a $2,000 piece of art, they're going to lose half their budget in one day.
Right, just to pay the commission for it.
I guess my thought process would be, I'd rather see it stay with the Hive to help that fund grow, like...
But the problem there is, that fund isn't just for the Hive, and the Hive has its own budget out of that fund.
So does another fund need to be...
The Arts, yeah, the Arts Commission has a budget out of that fund.
And this year, the Arts Commission did change it to be like within their budget, they have a line item, this program, and that's specifically for the Hive. But that's new for this year, they haven't done that in the past.
One option could be that the use, or like the funding sources for this could include an additional line item, so council could amend Ordinance 2019-7 to expand the scope of the funds that are permitted to be deposited within the Public Arts Fund. And you could specifically state that funds from sales of art at the Hive can go in here, and that would accomplish the purpose. It would redirect those funds from going into the general fund and direct it into the Public Arts Fund. That's a hybrid solution that I know, I don't think that's what you're asking. You want a specific, separate, non-reverting fund.
It's a retail business, but still has to follow all municipal government rules, so...
So couldn't it, if it's its own line item, still follow all the government rules? And just, it's just, it comes in, goes out of there, how does that even...
I don't know what you mean, that's, that's...
I think, I think she's talking in, let's say, let's break it down to an Excel spreadsheet. Like, your money goes into the Hive line, and then it comes out the Hive line, not as the full...
Yeah, then you're talking about setting up different funds and...
That's what, I know, that's what she was...
Yeah. Yeah, that's whatever you guys want to do.
It sounds like we should have further discussion on that.
And that's why I want to do it here, so that way we can get, get it all out there, so we can have something drafted. I didn't want to have Ann draft something up and then bring it to council, and then it changes, because the Arts Commission wants every other one. So if you, I was just trying to speed things up by getting it all out here. But yeah, that's what, I don't, I'm, we're just looking for direction on how to... If it's just the Art Commission's going in and out of the Public Art Fund...
So what happens, like, right now, Kim, if you, if you have a class coming up, and you know you need paintbrushes and everything else, paints and everything for that, do you have to go ask somebody for it, or do you have so much set aside, or...
She hasn't.
Last year I did. Now this year, they, they did set it by $8,000, but I still don't, I don't, I either ask the girls upstairs to order it, or I come and get the credit card and go get it at Walmart. And they take care of wherever it comes out of, you pay for that.
Is it, I mean, is it something that you could order at the beginning of the year and have a stockpile of it? Or you, or you don't have a whole lot of place to store it either?
Nothing is our issue, we don't take them storage really, no.
I mean, I mean, that stuff we could store here at City Hall. And obviously, there's rooms upstairs, there's the basement, we could store, you could buy it. And then you would have your own supply to come, come get it out. I mean, it's already been allocated by the Arts Commission. You go early in the year and get, well, not all of it, you need, but a whole bunch of stuff, and then have it here. And then you just come get it from here. Again, this is baby steps, trying to get to an easier solution for you. I know it's a pain for you, and I hate to hinder your work, because you do a heck of a job down there. That's, but setting up extra funds and different things like that, I think is going to be a pain at their office.
It's not necessarily that, but, yeah, like I already said, with internal controls, it's, yeah, that's how I'm graded. And so I need a second set of eyes on everything. So if you set up its own fund, and it's not budgeted, you're just asking for trouble. I'm not saying Kim's going to abuse it, but if she decides to leave, or somebody else comes in, it's, yeah, it's not good for her.
Kevin, do you think by next meeting, you can make a recommendation to us? I want to make, I want to make it easier on Claire Treger, I want to make it easier on her.
But, so does that, with the, with the extra money for programming and the ability to go buy ahead of time, I mean, does that help with any of it?
I think the budget went up $8,000 this year.
Yeah, so last year, they only budgeted $4,000 in that line item. And she had to keep requesting because she was having classes. So this year, they doubled what they budgeted to $8,000 for the Hive, to kind of help alleviate that issue, to where she'll come to ask every time to make the purchases that she needs for the class.
We need to make the Hive its own thing out of the Arts Commission and give it its own budget for months.
That, I think, ultimately, ultimately, the ask is to kind of delineate and separate from Public Arts Commission or Public Art Fund.
It's also got to generate income if it's going to, unless we just, you know, as far as, to make it its own. Unless we're just going to fund the Hive each year. You understand what I'm saying?
Right.
So it has to generate a certain amount of...
Well, my thought is, if it's going to operate on its own like that, it should be able to fund itself, basically.
And it found itself yet?
Yeah, does itself still?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I mean, it's a lot closer, it's a lot closer. I think rentals were, rentals were over eight... I think rentals were, rentals were over eight thousand last year.
I think the accounts of rentals is very close, but I, I guess I keep that as a separate thing from the, the art sales and the classes.
The problem is we're showing art sales, we're showing the whole hundred percent and we're only actually making the twenty percent. So when we show eight thousand dollars of art sales, you know, there really wasn't, there was only sixteen hundred dollars of profit.
Correct.
So that's where it's, it's not, I mean, it's, don't get me wrong, it's doing a good job down there, it's a great service to my community. It's not quite there to be able to pay all the bills yet.
So that twenty percent goes to like the general arts fund?
No, the city, the city general fund. And then they, the city, the council has been giving them money each year into the arts commission, the arts fund.
So for instance, last year they budgeted four thousand and we, we needed fifty-five hundred to pay for the art. So then we just went back and paid for more money to pay that. Well, my thought is if that money went in there, it's the thing to start with, it just comes out of there and we don't have to go ask for more money. It's covering what came in. I don't know how that has to work for...
And I think that, I think that the cleanest way to do it is to use the public art fund. Goes in there and comes out of there rather than affecting your budget, that's...
So they, the sale of art wouldn't drop their budget, like it's doing now? Or, or drop their cash fund, I guess?
But it doesn't drop if the fund, it just drops their budget line item.
To me, it looks as if, in a year or two, it might be self-sustaining.
I know, maybe we just need to budget more next year for them.
How do you set it up though, that at some point it can self-sustain? Like, I wouldn't wanna redo the ordinance to set it up that it's always going back in the general fund, that there's no money built up, that the art, that that hive can, say, one point in time it has fifty thousand dollars in the account. Okay, it's, now we're not gonna put as much in the arts commission? Or does it all have to go under the arts commission all the time?
The way the art, the arts commission is set up is they run the public art fund, basically, and all, all the different...
And they are in charge of the hive, wasn't the mayor in charge of the hive at one point in time and did it just get lumped in? Like, I thought the director of the hive was under the mayor's budget at one point in time. And he answered to the mayor.
Her salary is, her salary is still out of my budget.
But she answers to the arts commission, or you?
No, the arts commission is, is kind of like the liaison between North Adams Arts Council, all those different...
We started the arts commission, cause every arts committee was coming and asking. And they were supposed to take care of, calcified and anything about art, this is your deal, you're gonna take care of the art.
Pass out the money.
Pass out the money.
Run events, yeah.
So when the sculpture tour comes out, asks the arts commission was the goal of it when it was created, if I remember correctly. But then I think the hive must've got lumped into that at some point in time. Would the hive be better as a city department rather than a, or is that making too much?
I think that's your, that's your overall ask is for it to be, for the hive to be treated more as a department of the city versus a subsidiary of the arts commission.
If it's to be self-sustaining, the goal is that it's maintaining itself, that it makes sense that it's a growing line item.
Yeah, someday there's a full-time director of the hive. You've shown that you're growing it that quickly. I think that's where we want it, that's where it's heading. Years to get there.
It's, it's gotten a lot closer in the last year than it has in the first three or four.
Right, it was slow going there for a while.
And the more events you have in there, the more people get the idea, hey, this is a great place to have an event.
Yeah.
So I guess, so for this year, with the additional money for programming, do you, do you feel like you're gonna fall short, or do you think you're gonna buy everything you need? With, with the eight thousand program?
Compared to what we spent last year, she does have like more in the budget. But she's also probably more active than last year, because, I mean, you've learned what classes work and what ones. And it's all, I mean, I basically try to do with ask, if somebody says like, like watercolor class or like an art class, I'm just trying to make it happen. I thought, I can't say we're gonna have ten or twenty people. We just put it together and see who... I think it's a good start, eight thousand is a good start.
Are the classes paying for themselves when you have someone register, like, or is it kind of a...
So last year there were, I think about twenty-two classes. And one class, like a rock painting class, that was a wash. You know, we had, you'd pay fifteen bucks and I gave the instructor thirty bucks. But mostly we're bringing at least a hundred bucks in for the hive as rental and maintaining instructors on top of that. I am putting together a report that's not all done. Again, we're, we're making money on every class.
And then that goes back, does that go back into the general fund?
Goes to the public art fund.
The non-reverting fund? And then the arts commission uses the public. Who's in charge of that fund then?
You guys, yeah. Yeah, council's in charge of, I think the arts is just, so that, yeah. And so that way, and I think, I don't think the hive was open when it was created. I don't think so.
It's all about the same time.
Yeah, I think it was, you had sculpture tour and you had North Adams Art Council, um...
And the hive was gonna be opening shortly.
Connection.
Yeah, I think they were all asking each year for, for money. And so you guys created the arts commission to pay that stuff out. And let the, the artists kind of decide who, where the money should go. I mean, is this something that we look at come budget time to try to decide if...
You can't, I don't, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as changing the ordinance for the remainder of this year, for the commissions, is that, is that, that's a minor change to it, isn't it? Just a...
A minor change, and if it would be council's intention to potentially separate out the hive, treat it separately from other public art funding concepts, um, there could be a sunset provision added to the amendment that for, you know, the remainder of the twenty twenty-four budget year, all commissions received from sales of art at the hive are to be deposited into, um, the non-reverting public arts fund for the sole purpose of paying artist's commissions. And so you can very specifically direct how those funds are to be applied, used and the length and duration for, for that funding. So, that's one potential option. Um, you could simply make an amendment that would redirect those commissions or that the sale proceeds go into the public arts fund instead of the general fund. Um, and not attach any kind of deadline to it. It alleviates some of the funding issues for payment of commissions and without it draining their, uh, their budget resources. But it doesn't necessarily address Kim's request, Kim and Jamie's request, uh, for more, freedom to move. Freedom to move and grow, so, um...
I'm just trying to think of other things that are like this. I mean, we have, we have the rev complex with the concessions then, we have the pool. How, how is the pool done?
Similar, and the parks, non-reverting fund.
It goes right into the parks and then, does the pool have its own budget, or does the park have, parks have?
Parks has its own, it's got its line item.
So kind of like this. Just trying to think of other revenues, revenue sources, how that's, how they're treated.
I mean, in a, in a way, is it, how, how different is it from any other city department?
Well, I, I guess I see it more like the pool.
Okay.
It's its own revenue source, but it also has its own expenses.
I don't know that I feel like it's ready to be its own department yet. Cause it's not really sustaining itself.
Right. I mean, I'm, again, as we, we talked about this a while back, the same kind of, the same idea. But I'm all for her having every opportunity to be able to buy all the supplies she needs and not have to go through ten different chains to do it. Right?
Right.
She had the ability to go buy paintbrushes.
Right.
Right. I mean, if...
Which right now she can't, she just has to come...
Well, before she was, I mean, the budget wouldn't last through the year. So come November, December, if she had a class, she couldn't even go buy the materials she needed without going to arts commission for more money, right?
Yeah.
Even though that technically she made money or broke even, it just all went back into the general fund every time they got the money.
Right.
Or...
Uh...
So you buy fifty dollars worth of paintbrushes?
Yeah.
And you make a hundred dollars on the class, where does the hundred dollars go?
To the public art fund. All the programs and those kind of fees and the stuff that's generated at the hive goes to that fund.
And then to spend money out of that fund, you have to ask the arts commission to spend that money?
It's, that's what the budget is, the public art fund is the budget. So I get to ask you guys.
But I mean, if she only, if they, she was like budgeted for four thousand or five thousand and by the end of the year she spent six, even though she might've made eight, she passed her budget. Same thing, like I said, that same thing...
The thing was it still has a budget, but, yeah.
The same thing happens out at the rev complex when, even early on, they were, they'd be out of their budget, but yet there'd be a tournament coming where they made twelve thousand dollars in the weekend in concessions. But that still didn't go into their pot, it went back to the general fund.
I don't understand that concept.
This is different from the world I live in, I guess.
And I think that's why she's asking.
Yeah.
I think she, you know, like I said, she's doing a great job, she just wants to be able to run the business.
Right, right.
But again, like, government's different than regular business and we have different controls.
Yeah, I like the idea of giving her more control over the money that they are actually bringing in. Because even, I think about the amount of time that you're likely even wasting and the frustration that goes along with, I gotta go ask for more money to go buy more paintbrushes, like frustrating headache, right?
Right.
Um...
And that's, and everything I've asked for, I've been given, don't get me wrong, do you think it's more than great to work with? It's, but it is, yeah, this is...
Yeah, and you're only there so many hours, you're not a full-time employee, right?
A lot of stuff she has to come down here, go upstairs, five minutes up there, get them to work for her.
Absolutely. So I don't, I would love for her to have more control over that, I just don't know how it would happen.
Well, it's like a, I guess she's not a department head, but like, you own department heads, you only have credit cards to go buy material?
There's only a handful of credit cards in the city.
She comes and gets, like, if it's Walmart or something, she comes and gets the Walmart card, I think, right?
Everything else is just built to the city.
Usually, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, and...
Yeah.
One of my concerns about the hive, um, becoming its own department is, um, for how many years and, and even some of the meetings that I've attended, there's been this uncertainty about, um, involvement of, I guess, um, the residents who live there and they're supposed to be volunteering so much of their time to run the hive. And there was question of, is that really happening? And I feel like there's just a lot that needs to be kind of...
So there has been meetings with residents upstairs and there are some that volunteer. The issue with that is, I feel like the hive needs to have set hours that you can plan instead of being open. And the issue with the people living upstairs is, is that their pleasure on their, when they fit in their schedule, we can't plan open hours based on that. Some of them are volunteering, they'll text me that can I have the hive open this Sunday? Or something along that lines to kind of get their hours. But there's maybe two or three of them who've actually done that.
Yeah.
And one who's done it maybe three or four times. So it's just not a reliable force of having doors open. And I, I, I'm told we can't make them, I don't know, we can't make them do that.
Yeah, I don't remember what the contract says.
I know, I think that that was all stuff like early on with the agreement.
I think it's listed in this contract, it's in this contract, but I can't enforce that contract if whatever else is not provided by. But I guess it was, I should just say that avenue has been explored.
Yeah.
So what do you figure out there?
That would've always had to answer.
No, actually, this has been presented before.
That was my thought, is to, if we could update the ordinance to free up the budget as far as the commissions, that would help. And that wouldn't be a major change. It would be, yeah, change some procedures upstairs, but it's the same, same process. But it would help with their budget too.
And the commissions wouldn't go into the general fund, or are you saying that?
Well, you guys can figure that, the commission, they would just go into the public art fund and then out of the public art fund. And then the twenty percent can either stay in there or go out to the general fund, however you guys want. If you want to stay in the public art fund.
But right now, every, every commission in it, every twenty percent goes against their budget, right?
Yeah, so if they sell a thousand dollars, yeah, a thousand bucks comes out of their budget, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say let's, I'll make a motion to move forward with the amendment and to allow the money to stay in the public arts fund, is that what it's called?
I guess to utilize the non-reverting fund for artist's commissions?
It's a cumulative non-reverting public art fund. But one of the, um, specific sources of revenue for that could be...
Commissions.
Yeah, the sale of art from the hive with, and then that's specifically directed back into the, the art fund so that it doesn't deplete their budget when they pay the commissions out.
So then that fund will in turn start to grow over a time period? Cause right now, city budgets, what do we put in that fund every year? Do we add money to that?
We add twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand for twenty...
It was, it was the budget for this year. The council donates five, the arts, arts commission every year. So that's, that's part of their budget is five thousand of the council, basically.
And they're getting funding from somewhere else for that, other fifteen thousand?
It's from the same coffers as everybody, everybody else.
It's just in the budget?
Alright, so it's coming from the city.
Yeah, twenty thousand's coming from the city.
Yeah.
What if there's, say, one year they make five thousand, the next year they, this fund has twenty thousand in it. So then at one point in time, they would only need fifteen thousand to make their twenty thousand dollar budget, right?
Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah.
Am I seeing that right?
No, yeah, you're right.
But that encompasses the sculpture tour as well, and the flight of the fairies, and, and art. The public art fund, that's the whole arts commission and those are the organizations that right now are utilizing the fund.
North Adam Arts Council, and like, I don't know the breakdown...
They're part of it, I don't know as far as what funds they receive from that, so...
From the arts commission, I don't, I don't know if they meet anymore, or do they still meet?
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
Does the, does the flight of fairies or the sculpture tour put money back into that fund?
Flight of the fairies, yeah, both of them do. I guess I'm not sure about...
I think they have their own account, don't they?
They have get, got funds from the arts commission the past few years.
But I think they have their own fund.
They do.
Cause they're not, yeah. Sculpture tour. Cause they have a treasure and everything, so they have their own fund. So the arts commission must just give them a donation every year.
Right.
Yeah, I think that is. So back to the, well, this includes the classes as well, we talk about the commission... So back to the, well, this includes the classes as well, we talk about the commission's money coming into that.
The classes already go into the public art fund, yeah, all the all the that that generates besides the artwork goes into that, yeah. And like, yeah, like I said, Flight of the Farys, Sculpture Tour, all that feeds that fund and then, yeah, and then however you guys, if you want the twenty percent to stay in there.
I think it's only fair to leave it in there, I mean, and then that gets them step closer to self-sustaining.
I guess Kim's point is, is that everybody else is digging out of that pocket, I guess that might be an argument for the arts commission.
But not really, because the, and like all the other departments have a budget too, so even if it was its own department. It it's it's, nobody's really dipping into that fund, this isn't dipping into the fund, it's just dipping into a budget. So the.
Well, let's say, let's say the Hive makes five thousand dollars. She's trying to say that the Sculpture Tour gave two thousand dollars to Sculpture Tour, then the Hive only made two thousand dollars.
So the arts commission has different line items within their budget and the Hive is its own, which is programs and that's eight thousand. And then there's also projects which they have budgeted at like four thousand dollars and that's where projects where like Sculpture Tour, Flight of the Farys, that all goes into that item.
So and the the ordinance fills out the percentage allocation for those, so, um, forty percent shall be designated for public art programs and it sounds like the best. That is essentially all being geared toward and shifted toward the Hive, which is fantastic, but it may be insufficient and it may be something that the arts commission is capping based on the fact that it's specifically outlined in the ordinance that way, so, um.
I mean, really, this is the Hive budget right here, just take out the four thousand, the Hive budget right now is sixteen thousand dollars. These are the things.
Well, yeah, some of these is the Hive too. So there's a, there's a public art budget and then there's a public art fund. So the fund's a non-reverting fund and the, yeah, some of the money from all these places go into this fund, but this budget is funded by the city. It's not funded by the public art fund. Does that make sense?
Where does the public arts fund, where does that money go?
Yeah, then what?
It's a non-reverting.
Does it pay, what it, does some, it has to pay for something?
The artists, the art commission can dictate, or they can.
So it's.
So, alright, you you told me this fund's got ten thousand dollars in it. Where is that ten thousand dollars gonna go? At what point does that get spent? The fund?
Um, yeah, it just depends on what they want to do, as far, like, there's been projects paid out of there, I think there's maybe sculptures have been bought out of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's separate from their budget?
The non-reverting fund?
Yes. Alright, this is this is basically appropriations from the general fund, right, so it's, yeah, right. Does that make sense?
Yeah, do, I mean, do, okay, so do you guys want to make the changes with, we talked about commissions for now to see?
Leave the twenty percent in.
Right, so the money would go alien out, so it would gain twenty percent when there's a sale? And that it it's it's gonna be, it's kind of, for now, that would leave the Hive to to work with the arts commission on whether they raise their portion of the budget or?
I think that's an arts commission decision at this point. Because they're the one to. Well, I mean, at some point, if she thinks she needs more money, she answers to the arts commission right now, that's the arts commission's decision to decide. It's not really council's decision, is it?
Well, if she needs it out of that that art, public art fund, wouldn't she just go to the commission?
That that, yeah, that fund is used, yeah, to to buy, I think, yeah, to buy sculptures and new projects and that kind of stuff. This is separate fund, I think the idea was to start building a fund, so that way we can buy sculptures every year and can do different things, but. So and that's and that's why I was, too, if the whole ordinance needs. Relayed out how it's, or if there's a separate one. Yeah, that's why I don't know, that's why I brought it here.
Right.
So the twenty thousand dollars is our public art budgeted amount.
Mm-hmm.
This non-reverting fund is separate and distinct from the budgeted, the budgeted amount, but then. Any all or a portion could be applied from the arts commission with the approval of council to be distributed to any of the group certified art?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay. So in addition to changing the source of funding for this account, it could be considered that any other portion be allocated to the Hive specifically to be used for their programming?
Yeah, but. They have a budget for the program, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Because the, so the city funds the budget, you have this much money to spend, if you go over that, you have to ask before you go over it, but you gotta come back to ask for more if.
Can that?
Like, she can't just go, you have have a credit card with a public art fund and it's a white card.
Right, I get it.
Then you lose your control.
It's all in the general fund, all in one bank account.
But this fund, this public arts fund at some point can help fund this budget in a budget year.
Could, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'd like to see, so you might let this fund grow.
Right.
And then at some point, the city.
Have a budget, you know.
Well, we can, we have a budget, but the city's gonna take money from this commission's budget and pay for this budget and we're not gonna put twenty thousand dollars into this budget.
So putting these commissions into that public art fund is gonna, is going to help that grow?
Allow it to grow.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then we want the money there.
Okay.
I think I made the.
Make a motion out of it.
Yeah.
Motion second, on favor?
Close, same sign.
Kim, I'll talk to you about rugs, I I got some quotes to have the rugs, it's gonna be cheaper just if we bought one every quarter than it is to have them, so I did look at some, I'll talk to you, I'll talk to Jamie tomorrow. And we'll just, we'll just get a new one there and if we replace it every quarter, it'd be cheaper than renting, or it haven't, right?
Thank you.
Okay.
The ordinance is gonna be amended to allow for.
A locked cabinet basement here.
Like art sales, those funds are now going to go into the public art fund.
And she has every, all the stuff she needs also somewhere else. Because that's the pain, is like going back and asking for some stuff every time.
Yeah, because this is.
Okay, um. Nathan Shear's here, we'll go ahead and skip to him so he can get out of here when he wants to, he's gonna give us an update on the regional sewer district.
Somebody.
But real quick, I wanted to recognize Victoria's here, she just came in after we started already, so thanks for coming, Victoria. We're not gonna talk budgets, right?
Nobody.
Okay, um, good afternoon, my name is Nathan Shear, I am the superintendent of the Adams County Regional Sewer District. Um, I know there's some new members here on council, just want to give you guys an update on what we're doing at the district, uh, for the county, community, um, and everything else around here. So this, uh, the super district was started back in two thousand seventeen with our first project, um, as you can see, project contract A and B, um, were done in two thousand seventeen. Most, we only have one area in Lynn Grove that goes to burn, everything else that we have comes here to Decatur. Um, we have a treatment agreement, uh, with the city of Decatur on all this. Right now, um, through the five projects, we do not have two of the projects completed yet or hooked up, actually, all three of them here on project five have not been hooked up. But we are looking at nine hundred and seventy-six homes at this time will be serviced by the city of Decatur. Um, and that number continues to grow. Uh, we are actually here in April going to submit with the state revolving fund for additional, uh, projects in the area, which are looking at close to about three hundred and sixty additional homes. Um, that we will be servicing or trying to get funds for. So, um, this kind of just gives you, this is my superintendent's report that I give to my board, kind of gives you a little bit of an overview of where our projects are, customers that we service, um, just a nice little overview. I also, um, gave everybody our twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, um. Treatment, um, gallons that we sent to Decatur. Um, one of the things is, I put together on this is our total five months from each one of our flow meters that we have. Um, and one of the things is that I'm happy with is looking at our uses per day per house. So, um, back in December, we had seven hundred and eighty-six homes and we averaged eighty-five gallons a home. Um, we do know that number does go up with a little I and I infiltration coming in when it rains and stuff, but those are just some of the things that we are continuously looking for to make it better. Because we want to send as least amount of treatment to you guys as possible, because ultimately, our customers are paying for that too, for you guys, so, um. Just kind of a little bit of an overview on what we're doing, we work very closely with you guys or with the the city municipalities, um, on different areas that we're looking at, um, and. Looking close, we've actually are looking at upgrading some of the stuff that's going back to the treatment plant two and these next projects to better your guys' service and with ours too, so. Um, I think that's pretty much it. We do have, one one question I do have, um, so we have an agreement with the the building that the plaza out of the Parks Building that we purchased. I do know that contract is coming close to, just kind of want to get an idea of where you guys are at with that. Um, so we're growing at a rapid rate, um, we need some space and storage, our inventory is continuing to grow with the amount of customers we have, because we do service every customer in Adams County. Um, that's outside city limits, so we maintain close to probably about seven hundred and fifty grinders. So we are stockpiling the grinders, the pit. Um, this week alone, I've had four new construction homes, uh, come to me on wanting to build in one of our service areas. So we continue to grow like that, and which is good for the community, because that's bringing in people, um, to here at Decatur to buy and purchase things through our community. So that was just one of the things that, because I know March first was kind of that date that we had set, and I'm one hundred percent willing to work with everybody on that, I know that, um, not much has been done when it comes to the new site or where that's going, but. Just kind of wanting to get an idea, I mean, we can talk to later on that, but, um, definitely.
We can get, I can give you a better update at a different time, but I think it, some of it is right now, we're trying to figure out how big that our building needs to be.
Yep.
Um, I know Josh and Carrie are working on something to maybe move a couple trucks out of there, so that the building may not have to be as big as we first thought. So we will, um, have some discussions and I'll get with you.
Yeah, it's not problem.
Yeah, I appreciate it. But I appreciate everything you guys have done around the area, I mean, people need to realize, everything they're doing is helping clean up the streams, the rivers, I mean, everything, the creeks all around. Um, I think people would be amazed if they knew how much stuff was just flowing out, out on its own, so.
Right now, we have fifty-seven point four miles of mainline gravity and horse mains super in the county, so.
That's a lot.
That's a lot of horse main, so, a lot of maintenance.
Alright, thanks for all you guys do, that's great, thank you. Okay, um, I think the other ones are quick here. Okay, we have outstanding checks that are over two years old that we need to basically cancel, is that what?
Yes, uh, I got a total of fifteen checks, uh, that are over two years old, uh, totaling two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, these are checks that the city wrote and nobody cashed, so we're canceling them.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Some of them were stop payments that crossed each other's mail and stuff like that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to give that money to the Hive. So we have, I need the motion to go ahead and cancel these checks that are outstanding until over two years.
So moved.
Tagged. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, okay. And then we have, um, a resolution to transfer some money within the wastewater department, um, some debt reserve money that was left over from a bond that can go back to the general fund, right?
Yep, we paid off the twenty fifteen sewage refunding bond, so we have to hold so much money in an account, debt service account. Um, that's, that total is a one-year's payment, so now that we've paid that bond off, we can lower that amount that's held in that account, like two hundred and ninety-six thousand, five thirty-one, twenty-six. Can be transferred out of that fund into the operating fund.
Is that a resolution here?
Yeah.
So Kevin will need, uh, we need to, a motion to. Read the resolution.
Present the resolution.
Twenty twenty-four dash one, probably.
So moved.
I mean, Dan just had it.
By short title only, right?
By short title only.
Anybody want to make a clean?
I'll, I'll practice some more here, right? Okay, so, um, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong.
Number one?
Yes.
Resolutions, we do three readings, two as well, just one. Okay. Um, so I will make a motion to introduce resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one by short title only.
I'll tag it. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the sewage utility debt service reserve fund to the sewage utility operating fund. I'll make a motion to pass resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one.
I'll tag it. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Yeah. Do you have any elsewhere?
Uh, no.
And do you have any else?
I don't.
Okay. Department head, Kevin G.
This is Friday, we're gonna go to elementary school, we're going to basketball.
I figure I'm, I'm going to to watch our police department lose like they do every year to elementary kids. No, thanks for doing that, that's a, it's a fun day, uh, the kids love it. Awesome. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright. Anything from the combination of fire department back there?
Uh, we're in, uh, we're a little behind, we're in, uh, school right now, doing our annual company education. I'll drop the old, I'll drop that, we're gonna go back right now, also by the end of the month, we'll have all the students. Oh, yeah, we found our plug, we have a remote controlled fire, I have.
Okay.
We have a remote controlled fire, I recall, plug.
Oh, yeah?
He was missing for, I want to say five years or something. He's been missing for, I want to say five years, and he found him and he wasn't even at our station anymore. So we got him back and he's working now, so.
Cool.
Guys, chase the kids who are dead.
Cool. You know, again, thank you guys for doing that, I've been both police and fire. It's funny, kids will remember stop, drop, and roll and feeling the door. They may not remember what sign and cosign is when they're 25 years old, but they remember this stuff that they learned from you guys, so it's awesome and thanks for doing it. Appreciate it. Kurt?
Good.
Aaron? Jamie? We're on a roll. Carrie? Josh?
Weather breaking and we got a lot of projects that are being fired up here.
Josh has been finding a lot of things to work on and we're gonna get a lot of things fixed here this year. So thanks for doing that. Carrie, thanks for working with him on all these things and hopefully we'll, hopefully we'll, hopefully we'll make some progress. Hillary from council?
Make a motion to pay the claims.
I'll second.
Motion second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Oh, one quick thing, we do have, we have a bunch of wrestlers going to semi-state this weekend, good luck to them. And a bowling team, it's a club sport, but the bowling team from Balma is going to state next weekend in Anderson. Well, this is a big deal, we start off with, I don't think people realize how many kids are in this every year. It's a huge tournament. We have, is it three, are three individuals going? Three individuals and then the team are both going to state, so that's a really big deal, that's cool. So good luck to them next weekend.
Awesome.
Okay.
Pay the claims?
We did that.
Okay, motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign.